I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move.
Second. Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as submitted. Is there any discussion on those minutes? If not, Ms. Whitby, would you call a roll?
Does that include the special call?
I'm sure that's what Alderman Whitsher, I heard him say that. Ms. Whitby, you didn't hear him say that?
I sure, I did now.
And I'm sure that second was in reflection of the special call also. So on the, on the motion.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Whitsher.
Yes.
We have communications and can I have a blanket motion? We've got seven communications.
I move.
Second. Any council member want any of the seven pulled? Number two. The other. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Whitsher.
Read number two by title and see what Alderman Whitsher wants to do.
Title, it is a letter from Rodney Larson, Executive Director of the Central Arkansas Planning and Development District Incorporated. It is regarding a approval of a grant application for general improvement funds in the amount of $30,000.
Alderman Whitsher.
Sure.
Ms. Whitby.
Just the part that he mentioned on the projects. Number one is going to be Five Mile Creek Walking Trail between JFK Boulevard and North Hills Boulevard Extension and ADA Access for $7,500. Indian Hills Community Club Renovations for $7,500.
...that they are potentially violative of either the Constitution or laws of the state of Arkansas as well as the federal government. So, Mr. City Attorney, if you want to comment, I don't intend to take a whole lot of time with this, but it looks like we may have a chance to deal with this in a justiciable way.
Well, and that opportunity may present itself. As you know, city council's opened with a prayer for as long as we've had city council. There has been a complaint that's been registered because of what is considered to be the sectarian nature. In other words, the invocations that are offered often include words that are characterized as Christian, just attributable to the Christian faith, which at least one person at least has said is offensive to them. They feel like, I guess, alienated from the process. And in my letter to you, I try to give you just the big, bold summary based on all of my research about where I think the law stands and what my guidance to you would be. And, you know, the first point is just a point of law, that city council is not to proselytize people. We have an opening invocation, that's not a time for an altar call, and it's not a time to seek conversion or to disparage other people's religious beliefs. Traditionally, we've allowed aldermen to pray on a rotational basis just according to their own faith. I don't think that's offensive to the Constitution, but it is pretty clear that opening invocations are not intended to proselytize, advance, or disparage any religious belief, or even those people who don't profess any religious belief. In response to the complaint, I mean, there's several things you can do. If you choose to do so, you could discontinue having opening invocations, and many cities have chosen to do that. You can also establish a non-sectarian prayer policy. As I noted in my memo, that's a difficult thing to do, because what one person finds offensive, another may not find offensive. So it's, it can be done, it's been upheld, and I cite a case, Turner versus Fredericksburg, where that's been upheld, but it has a unique set of challenges with a non-sectarian prayer policy. Some cities have had a policy where they allow volunteers from the community to come in to give opening invocations in order to try to give a broader viewpoint, more representative of a diverse society during opening invocations, and that too has been upheld by the courts. We haven't done that. Once again, there are unique challenges to that process of trying to have equal representation of viewpoints, and there's, there's the chance that somebody could walk up and say something that's just very offensive, disparaging to someone else's religious beliefs, that might truly alienate someone from the political process, and I think that's the thing that we want to avoid. Also, there's no case out there, at least that's controlling on the city of North Little Rock, that says that you must discontinue your process. So you can continue as we have in the past. I urge you to be sensitive of other people's religious beliefs, you represent them too, so be sensitive of their religious beliefs that may not be the same as yours. And on the last page of my letter, I have a note that, a few sentences that I would encourage you to include on all of our agendas, and even in video transmission or retransmission of city council meetings, that says, "The city of North Little Rock welcomes people of diverse cultures and beliefs. Any religious viewpoint expressed during invocation or at any other time during the meeting reflects only the personal opinion of the speaker. It is not intended to proselytize, advance, or disparage any religious belief." And hopefully, people will understand better than that, that when someone's offering an invocation, they are reflecting their own personal religious beliefs, that's not a religion or a position that the city of North Little Rock is proffering that is intended to exclude others.
Thank you very much. If there's no other comments from the council member, we're ready for the next thing. Let's do, Mr. Rick Uzell, you want to come to the microphone? We've got a week that's very important to us, and let me walk down and go ahead and make this presentation.
I'm always, certainly not in a disparaging way, but I think in a more factual way, I've always heard that 9-1-1, around the center of the neck of the hour, so information comes in, and each unit or staff are absolutely critical in receiving that information, and in most instances, not all, but most instances, it's an emergency nature, and dispatch in terms of communicating with our police and fire, and even at times, other needs that require our workforce to address hazardous and safety issues, health and safety issues, are critically important. This week recognizes the importance of our emergency services, so let me join with all of our community, most of whom see our police and firemen, but they do talk to y'all, and we do want them to know how much we appreciate what each of you do, day in and day out, to make sure that the information is gathered, that it's transmitted to the appropriate responders, and that it be done in a way that the emergency can be dealt with as fast and as timely and as efficiently as we know how with some very talented folks. Whereas, emergency can occur at any time, that require police, fire, emergency medical services, whereas, an emergency occurs, prompt, responsive, police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and others, is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the accuracy and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone and or walk communication. Whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing their information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the public safety dispatchers of North Little Rock Emergency Services have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminal suppression and fires and rescue response. And finally, whereas, but not in our thanks, that each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year, therefore, I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of North Little Rock, to proclaim April 11th through the 17th, 2010, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of the men and women whose dedication, diligence, and professionalism keeps our community and citizens safe. We thank you, we appreciate what you do, and we look forward to the continued high-quality service of which you, day in and day out, provide us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. In the U.S., there are over 240 million, 240 million 911 calls a year. We did the statistics on our 2009, we had over 77,000 911 calls. Millions of time each year responders are dispatched, everything goes right, and lives are saved. We spend a lot of time guarding against those that go wrong. Public safety dispatchers are not robotic, they are human. Errors are magnified, scrutinized, and publicized as deadly mistakes. It's up to us, the supervisors and our public safety dispatchers, to identify the many different situations that can create deadly errors and take steps to prevent them. This is on a public safety dispatcher's mind every time they field a 911 call. Our track record's very good, and we're proud of that. I have with me tonight Terry Todd, she was our 2009 Dispatcher of the Year. So from both of us and all the dispatchers, we want to thank you for honoring us this week.
Now, I don't have a presentation on this, but I do have a really sincere acknowledgement. Bob Rhodes, where are you? You and Bert want to come up to the microphone? Bert Turner? In fact, I saw Bert just a few minutes ago with a fire hat on and was out at Pinnacle Mountain setting fires. So, you know, legal fires, I might add. And, you know, almost every time, whether, I think the first several times I got to cross Bert's trail was at the Old Mill, when that part had been adopted, and then, you know, out at Burns Park with, you know, trails galore, if you want to put it that way, Gene Pfeiffer's trail that, you know, was marked, and in fact, we bought a piece of equipment. We might even name that piece of equipment after you, Bert. You know, Bob talked me into that last year, and in large measure was because of the volunteer work, obviously, that you do, and I think that piece of equipment, you might even just give us a little idea, or Bob Rhodes might, about that, but, you know, the volunteerism of this community, and Bert was selected as Arkansas Volunteer of the Year, and just recently honored at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and without a doubt, not only does he spend his time, a good bit of it, if not a majority of it, in North Little Rock, but he spreads himself over on, as I just indicated, over to Pinnacle Mountain, and had a nice red hat with a vest on a little bit earlier, over working to rid that underbrush over there of some fire potential foliage, leaves, and other things, but, you know, Bert is just a real, the kind of person that you just wish you had a lot more of, but you know you couldn't have that many more of, because there's only one Bert Turner, and we are glad that he's a citizen and resident of North Little Rock, and we are ever in your debt and appreciative for what you have done and continue to do for this community. There's so many people that enjoy the fruits of your labor, the footprints that you've left around here, that will never know who they owe that to, but maybe tonight, along with the acknowledgement that was given you, I believe it was in Eureka Spring just recently in March, you know, when that announcement was made, and I'm going to ask Bob if he wants to add a little bit to that. I mean, the distinguished opportunities that we've had to be recognized, that when the 2008 Trail Symposium is here, on and on, we could go and, and follow the trails of Bert Turner. So Bob, if you want to add a little bit to it, we just wanted to ask Bert to come up here and make sure that, you know, if somebody sees him and they're out on the trail, thank him for what he's done. Bob?
Okay, Mayor, the Mayor's covered most of it, but he's one in a million, and he's done a lot of work for us. I mean, he was the one that started the Friends of the Old Mill, he was the first president, so he's been instrumental there. With our trail program, you hear a lot about the paved trails, mainly for cycling and joggers, but we have in Burns Park approximately 13 miles of natural trails, and in there that's for equestrians, hikers, and off-road bicycles. And then also, Bert, pretty much by himself, and he has, not only because he's a volunteer, but he also gets other volunteers to help him, just numerous hours have been spent out in Burns Park and also out at Campbell Lake, particularly on the land that Gene Pfeiffer gave us. And by, pretty much by himself, he added two miles of trails through that wooded area up by the big damn bridge. But we do appreciate what he, what he's done, and, but the state did recognize him as being the outstanding volunteer, gave him the Outstanding Volunteer Service Award about a month ago. So we really appreciate what Bert's done, and I'll let Bert talk about his new little toy.
Tell us about that machine. First of all, let's thank Bert Turner, we appreciate that.
Well, as you can tell, I'm an old guy, and if you work out on the trails for a long period of time, doing a lot of work digging dirt and rocks and all that, it gets pretty tiring on us. And I do have a lot of other volunteers, it's not just me by myself. You'd rarely ever see me out working by myself, but a lot of guys that help, but we do have a trail tool now. It's a very small, little mini skid steer that has a bucket and a bulldozer blade on it, and it's just a stand-on, walk-behind kind of thing, but it can do the work of a million of those people that we're talking about all at one time. And I appreciate the city coming up with the funds to provide that for Burns Park, and it won't just be used on the trails, it'll be used for lots of other things. So it's a good tool, we appreciate it, and I enjoy volunteering for the city of North Little Rock, it's a part of my pleasure, makes me feel good, so I'll keep doing it until I keel over, I guess, but...
We know there's a lot, a lot of trail left in you, and we appreciate it, Bert. Thanks a lot, and, you know, if we gave you a day, it wouldn't be enough, we want to give you every day, because you give something to us every time we enjoy those trails. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Marilyn Hall. Marilyn is, Marilyn, come on up to microphone. Now, you know, Marilyn is another one of our volunteers with the North Rock Animal Shelter, and she wants to make a little announcement, because North Little Rock has again been recognized. Marilyn, I'll certainly give the microphone to you, and thanks for all of what you do, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hayes and council members. North Shore Animal League America, the world's largest animal rescue group, left New York last month on their ninth tour for life. They will be traveling across the country, stopping in 20 cities, working with over 100 shelters to promote the adoption of homeless animals. And for the eighth year, North Little Rock is going to be a stop on their tour. We are the smallest city and the only stop in Arkansas, and folks, this is an honor for North Little Rock, it really is. And it's a recognition of the work that North Little Rock Animal Control is doing, not only in taking care of the animals that come into the shelter, working very hard to try to find homes for them, but one of our main priorities now, and I think a very important one, is convincing people to have their cats and dogs sterilized. And we're doing this through education, through our differential dog and cat license, financial help for people who can't afford it, and other incentives. And until we can convince people of the importance of sterilization, there are going to be more animals out there than we can ever find homes for. We have asked other groups to join us Tuesday, that's a week from tomorrow, April 20th, at Lakewood Village. We will be there from 11 to 5:00. We've got lots of special activities planned. We will be giving a free microchip and rabies shot to the first 50 people that bring a sterilized animal to the event, one per family. We're going to be giving away a certificate for free sterilization every hour, we'll have a drawing, we'll have an animal trainer there that can help you if you're having problems with your pet, we'll have some free giveaways, but most of all, we're going to have some wonderful animals out there looking for a home. So I'm hoping that all of you will come, even if you aren't interested in adopting, come and thank the people from New York for coming. Claire and Warren have been the couple that have come for many years, they're old friends, we're always glad to see them. And just come out and thank them for coming and give them a warm Arkansas welcome. And I have some flyers, is there any place that I might leave these in case someone wants to pick them up?
Absolutely. We'll, Mr., give them to Mr. Sisson, and, you know, he'll send them out with our checks, so, well, that's close enough.
All right, thank you. I hope I'll see you all a week from Tuesday.
Thank you, Marilyn, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
Mayor, before Marilyn leaves, do you want to mention y'all's open house that's also coming up? Your open house for your...
We're having, we have a new addition at the shelter, a new part of the building, and we're very proud of it, it's something we've needed for a while, and our Friends of Animals group that raises funds to help us is having an open house to show this off to the public, and I'm not even sure, what time is it? Diane, do you know?
Well, I don't, but I will.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should know too, but anyway, we'll be there to greet you and show you through the new addition.
Thank y'all very much, and we appreciate what you do out there. Y'all do a great job, and for folks who can't say thank you, but we can, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and, this is sort of appropriate, let's do a special call, and then we're going to introduce Lauren Walters here after our special call, because they're sort of tied together. Ms. Whitby, if you'd publish a special call?
The first special call is an email dated Friday, April 9th, from Jason Carter to the Honorable Members of the City Council. Purpose of the email is to advise you that Mayor Hayes has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM Monday, April 12, 2010, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution acknowledging the importance of Earth Day, supporting community activities and events, recognizing our responsibility to preserve and protect the environment, sponsored by Mayor Hayes, and pursuant to Section 2-48.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, all eight aldermen were notified and have acknowledged receipt.
Would you please read the legislation?
Yes, sir. The resolution is a resolution acknowledging the importance of Earth Day, supporting community activities and events, recognizing our responsibility to preserve and protect the environment...
And for other purposes.
And for other purposes.
Why don't you just go ahead and read it? Let's read this one, I think it's worth us listening to.
Whereas, Earth Day is celebrated annually to recommit, to recommit to the goals of a healthy environment and a peaceful, just, and sustainable world, and whereas, the Arkansas Earth Day Foundation will hold its annual celebration in North Little Rock's Riverfront Park on Saturday, April 24, 2010, and whereas, the city of North Little Rock, its citizens and residents are committed through the goals of various ordinances, policies, and actions to the preservation and stewardship of our natural landscape, open space, and sensitive environmental areas, and whereas, the city of North Little Rock, the city, has established a Green Agenda Committee to lead efforts to engage citizens and residents in using their energy and environmental resources more wisely, and whereas, the city fosters and encourages environmentally sound businesses and promotes the use of alternative energy use and recycling, and whereas, the city acknowledges its collective responsibility for environmental education, stewardship, and community sustainability. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of North Little Rock, that the city reconfirms its commitment to the goals and principles of Earth Day, and hereby proclaims April 24, 2010, to be Earth Day in the city of North Little Rock. Do you want me to keep on?
Sure.
That in keeping with the city's mission to protect and enhance the long-term health of its natural environment, economy, and community, all citizens, businesses, organizations, schools, clubs, congregations, neighborhoods, and families are invited and encouraged to participate in community Earth Day activities at Riverfront Park, and to encourage environmentally sound practices every day, and that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Any discussion on the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Whitsher.
Unanimously, we have now proclaimed Earth Day. I know that last year I was able to get a tree, if I'm not mistaken, and the leaves, I want everyone to know, did come out on that tree this spring, so, so far, so good. With that, Jill Ponder, Jill is the Energy Services Coordinator for the North Little Rock Electric Department. Jill, if you want to come to the microphone and tell us about our contest, and let's be introduced to Lauren, who is the winner. So give your attention, if you would, to Jill Ponder.
Thank you. The North Little Rock Electric Department had its second annual Earth Day poster contest for the fifth graders of the North Little Rock School District. This year's theme was Energy Saving Starts With You. Each of the students were given several ideas to choose from. One may be not standing with a refrigerator door open, turning lights out when not in use, or maybe replacing old bulbs with CFLs. This year, Lauren Walters captured those three and many other energy-saving ideas in her poster, and that's why she's being awarded the 2010, she's our winner of the 2010 Earth Day Poster Contest. So Lauren, if you would come up...
Lauren, I think your art teacher, Mary Matthews, is here, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, maybe your parents, Herbie and Shannon Walters, if they're here, or whoever else you have, that, you know, and let me come down. I always like to have a chance to get a picture with, when John's over there, hold on a second. Mayor, I think some grandparents are out there also.
Well, we, we vote for grandparents, we do vote for grandparents.
That's right, yeah.
This is her, this is her poster right here.
We need to get that in with...
Yes, and it will be on display at City Hall for an entire month, so you can come by and see all the wonderful things that she has in it.
Wish they all look alike.
Okay, there you go. Okay, so we got it from here, okay.
Mom, grandma, daughter.
Okay, all right. Good morning. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. 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 All right. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
between the City of North Little Rock and Argenta Community Development Corporation, Habitat for Humanity of Pulaski County, Arkansas, and North Little Rock Housing Authority for Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2, NSP-2, and for other purposes, sponsored by Mayor Hayes. Pursuant to Section 2-48.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, all eight aldermen were notified and have responded that they received the special call.
Alright, would you please publish the first item in the special call?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing and ratifying a consortium agreement among the City of North Little Rock, Argenta Community Development Corporation, Housing Authority of North Little Rock, and Habitat for Humanity of Pulaski County, Arkansas, and North Little Rock Housing Authority for Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2, NSP-2, and for other purposes, sponsored by Mayor Hayes. Pursuant to Section 2-48.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, all eight aldermen were notified and have responded that they received the special call.
Alright, would you please publish the first item in the special call?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing and ratifying a consortium agreement among the City of North Little Rock, Argenta Community Development Corporation, Housing Authority of North Little Rock, and Habitat for Humanity of Pulaski County for Neighborhood Stabilization through the use of NSP-2 funds granted to the City of North Little Rock by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Ms. Bowman, you want to come to the microphone, just in case there's any questions? I think all of us perhaps have had some knowledge, but in case there are those at home that haven't, this, the City of North Little Rock was awarded NSP-2 grant, which NSP stands for Neighborhood Stabilization, and the amount of it, about, well, to be exact, six million four hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. I'm sure there's a way that they calculated that, but that, you know, will go for over a hundred homes.
For about a hundred homes. That's a minimum amount we can do.
And, and there are various ways that, that you can reach that number, primarily in the Barron Cross and the Holt neighborhood communities. And we put together a consortium that consists of the North Little Rock Housing Authority, the Argenta Community Development Corporation, and Habitat for Humanity. All obviously are very recognized and certainly appreciated for the good work that they've done, and I see several representatives that are here for each of those organizations. Mr. Plunkett for Habitat, Brad Williams for Argenna CDC, and I'm trying to think, where is, is Mr. Redmond, Housing Authority?
I'm from Project Medell, from the Housing Authority.
Okay, so we, we're all here in case there's any, any questions. You know, we're working to acquire properties that will be, homes that will be built on each of those, lots that are acquired, and if anybody has any questions, they certainly are, are available to be answered. We have the people here that can do that. But without a doubt, you know, this 6.4 million will make a dent, a big, very positive dent in turning around. We've already been working hard to turn around the Barron Cross area with great cooperation from the people who live there, along with, you know, folks that are very committed to developing our urban area here in North Little Rock, and this is without a doubt a real chance for us to, to travel many miles before we have to sleep in terms of, of the team that has been put together. Ms. Bowman, if you want to make a quick comment or two, and then if there's any questions, I guess the best, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to add that what we're going to be doing is purchasing some houses that we may renovate, we may end up tearing them down, depending on the condition. We'll be building new, new houses, renovating houses, and doing reconstruction with these funds.
Any, let's, let's go ahead and get a motion to adopt the first one.
Some move.
Is there a second? Move, motion second. Any, any discussion, any questions? This is pretty, pretty about, you know, when you get this kind of a shot, it, it's really appreciated, and we thank the HUD and certainly the Obama Administration for this shot in our arm. With that, on the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher.
Will you read the second special call?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing and ratifying individual consortium funding agreements between the City of North Little Rock and Argenna Community Development Corporation, Habitat for Humanity of Pulaski County, Arkansas, and North Little Rock Housing Authority for Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2, NSP-2.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher.
Alright, Mayor, just note that one of the executive director of Habitat for Humanity is in our audience tonight, if he'd like to say a word or two, but Mr. Bill Plunkett's here, so. Extremely talented, the thing that amazes me about Mr. Plunkett is, is the exceptional talent of the class that he graduated from high school with. You won't, you don't have to say that's 1965 when you come to my...
Do you need to say where the wireless gets live, where the class of 65? I would just like to thank everybody for this opportunity. You guys know I was raised in this city, I love this city, and we're going to make a big dent in this place. We're going to make it a better place to live. And I couldn't do it without, without our friends from Argenna CDC and the North Little Rock Housing Authority, but most importantly, without the City of North Little Rock, without your support. So, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
And we appreciate what you and, and your group does, as well as reflecting on the other two partners. We've got a great coalition, and we know great things are going to happen. Thank you, Bill. Let me just acknowledge or point this out real quickly, and then we'll go on to the, you know, any, go on with our agenda, but, you know, over the years, I've grown to where I've submitted my State of the City in writing. Each of you have been provided a copy of that. I volunteered to, you know, to say that orally, but I've never been asked to do that, so I'll continue with the practice of submitting it in writing unless someone demands that we use the microphone to amplify the remarks that I've put before you. So, it was a good year, a challenging year, but, you know, we, we look forward to continuing to make things happen in North Little Rock. So, absent anybody's request, we'll just note that for the record.
Will this be on the city website, though?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll make that available on the city's website. Okay, there's, Ms. Whitby, do you have, okay, let's go to the unfinished business. And Ms. Whitby, you want to just go ahead and, I don't know, I've got any instructions on that, Mr. Carter or our code office on the 5110 velvet?
We're still holding that until April 26th.
Oh, okay, I guess I can read if I look a little closer. Alright, just go ahead and, you know, go ahead and hold that, and then, Ms. Whitby, let's go to the ordinances, and there are no ordinances, so let's go to new business.
Yes, sir. R1044, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Don Beavers to the Civil Service Commission.
Move for adoption.
On the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher. R1045, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Reverend J.C. Myers to the Library Commission.
Do they have a motion?
Some move.
A motion moved and seconded, on the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher. R1046, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Patty Julian to the Wastewater Treatment Committee.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher. R1047, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Steve Spar to the position previously held by Jimmy Phillips on the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Move for adoption, but we need to amend in the... The motion for adoption includes the motion to amend in the personal information sheet. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
On the motion?
Ross, White, Taylor, Robinson, Baggot, Phillips, Height, and Witcher.
Let me acknowledge again appreciation to Don Beavers and Reverend Myers, along with Patty Julian. I don't think either of them are here, but I know Steve Spar is, and while I think Steve graduated from Sylvan Hills, he was a member of the class of 65, wrong high school, but he went to school with us a little bit, and former, Steve, if you would, just come on up and say hello. Steve was the, I don't know what your exact title was, but ran the UP shops, the Jink Shops, for a number of years before he retired, and, and has been a very active and contributing member of this community, and we appreciate Steve, we appreciate you going on the Board of Adjustment, and it's a very important body that we have, and, and just wanted to call you up so everybody could say hello and say hi, and thank you for what you've done. You know, Steve is also a Harley rider, so, you know, a special little sense of adventure. So, Steve Spar?
Well, I didn't know there was any other kind of motorcycle.
I don't think there is.
Mayor Hayes, council members, I do appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of North Little Rock. It's great living in North Little Rock, and it's going to be a real honor to serve, and I promise you, I won't let you down. Thanks a lot for your vote of confidence.
Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. And thanks to the others. Next item?
R1048, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution requesting feasibility analysis of the northern extension of the river rail line.
Can I get a motion, then I'll explain it?
Some move.
Second.
There, yeah, and I know I've, we've had a chance in, in certain, and I'm trying to remember when Little Rock actually did its extension, the first extension of river rail. To give a little history, some members here weren't on the council, but the river rail was basically two and a half miles, its first basic stage, and that was roughly a mile in North Little Rock, a mile in Little Rock, and we'll say a half a mile crossing the river. This council, we entered into discussions and adopted an interlocal agreement, both the City of North Little Rock and Little Rock, along with the county, that governed future extensions of river rail. A little bit of the variation is the county, to, to give you a little bit of insight, is always in for a third. They are going to pay a third of the cost, both in terms of operations, as well as in terms of extensions and the capital costs that are associated with it. There was a difference that was, well, and, and the same with Little Rock and North Little Rock when it comes to the operational side of the ledger. When it comes to the capital side of the ledger, the, there's a little bit of variation. Again, the county's in for a third. The city that the improvement is to take place in will have an extra roughly 8%, if I'm not mistaken. In other words, the city in which the extension not take place in will be responsible for 25% of what normally is an 80/20 split in how we have in the past constructed the extensions of river rail. So, you're looking at Mr. Sisson, you know, 33 plus, almost right at 40%, I believe, the 38, 39% of the, of usually the 80/20 split will be paid by the city in which the improvements are going to take place. And that's what happened with the first stage, when Little Rock moved out to the Clinton Library, roughly an additional mile, we'll say. Then, now it shifts to North Little Rock for us to make our choice, and y'all will recall a year ago when I, and certainly not making any commitments on behalf of this council, but there was some money that the, that Metro Plan allocated toward studying the feasibility of the third extension going out to the airport. You know, I had indicated that if that proved to be worthwhile and feasible, that then I might, and might again is an operative word, recommend to this council that we defer our choice, and, and did that with the idea that connections from downtown to the airport would benefit all of us. And I still believe that, and, and hope that one of these days that connection will take place. But the study came back early on and showed that the opportunity to develop land, which is a big part of, of, you know, the, the river rail system, the development that goes on around it, and I'd say there's somewhere between 800 and a billion dollars in terms of improvements that have gone on within, not, I'm certainly not going to try to attribute all that to river rail, but, but some of it, without a doubt, is, is added to the luster by those investment decisions being made. And so, now the decision is on our side, you know, I'm not saying that this legislation does not contemplate any cost at this moment, but, you know, going east or going west, be honest with you, for a long time was what I thought we would end up doing, and that is in, in large measure because of the, you know, we'll say challenges that present, that a northern route would present, the quickest of which is, is how we're going to get, how we're going to address two main, maybe three main lines of Union Pacific Railroad, one of which on the northern side goes up toward Fort Smith, and two main lines run through the central part of our city. For a long time, you know, we all, we had another main line that came south from that same area and went across the Junction Bridge. But obviously, that Junction Bridge now is pedestrian and the right-of-way, the city's acquired most all of the, the right-of-way from Union Pacific. So, while some may have couched this as the third extension of river rail, what it really has done, in, in large measure, has caused us to look very seriously at a very aged and, and perhaps in need of replacement. Now, safety, I want to underline, there's really no question of safety of, of the Main Street Viaduct. There are, it is experiencing some signs of age, those age, that age signature as a result of some concrete has fallen off the bottom of it. I know we've had some conversation with Union Pacific about that. We don't believe that, you know, there's any real risk, certainly not with the integrity of the bridge, but that structure is 70, 80, I don't know, Mr. Sisson, you know, 90 years long, very old, and we, we did some significant rehabilitation to that about 10 years ago, and extended its life to a certain degree, but I think there's a, in fact, I know, in talking to the Garver and Garver, who are civil engineers that actually did the rehabilitation of that, that, you know, that future investment in that structure is probably not going to be worthwhile in terms of its continued use. So, you know, sooner rather than later, you know, we're going to have to deal with how we're going to keep that artery of our transportation system open, and to do it in, in sort of a planned way, and while we do it, you know, then, you know, the river rail extension is, is a part of it, but, but the, I want to emphasize that it's only a part, because the major thing is the, is making the decisions of what we want to do with the, with the Main Street Viaduct. And, and the meeting that I had with the folks from Garver and Garver, along with Central Arkansas Transit, you know, led in the discussion of, of, of really, there are four, perhaps five different approaches that can be taken. One is pretty much off the table, and I'll mention that last, but four, you know, to take a look at and to try to see whether there's any viability for those, and that is, you know, the, the replacement of the bridge and what kind of replacement it would be, and I think many people believe it would be much shorter in length than what is currently there, and, and open up, at least on the south side, some significant additional real estate for our downtown area, most of which the city owns, not all, but a good portion of it. Now, the second, you know, would be to go under. You know, we don't necessarily have to replace a bridge, and I cite the Pershing Overpass as a, as a potential alternative, and in fact, I, you know, just raising that in the discussion, you know, I, I would, if I had to wave my wand again, I think that underpass sort of approach might even be the best, because, you know, a lot of what you've got to look at is, is what are we going to do during a construction period? So, while river rail is somewhat bringing this to the forefront in terms of discussion, you know, one of the things that I think is absolutely, you know, we'll say, a critical opportunity, we were able to receive 1.4 million dollars for the roundabout, and a large measure of why we were able to receive that is because of the chance that, because we had all the, virtually all the engineering done, most all the engineering. The engineering was done, you know, was done in prep for us being able to, to construct it with some city funds. You know, we, we, we didn't have to go that route because of the federal stimulus funds that were available. We didn't necessarily have the money, but it even yet took us a year almost to, to add to what was already done so that we would qualify for federal funding. Now, spoken with Judge Valines, who has an opportunity to partner, and he'd been, while he didn't make any commitments, of course, the quorum court, I think is a part of that, he did indicate some receptiveness to this being something that the county, and he would look with potential favor on trying to be a partner. So, no commitments, but, but certainly a receptive ear that we had in, in terms of partnership. So, you know, while it, again, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or any comments anybody has, you know, this is essentially saying, you know, that, you know, again, this council can, you know, can, can make decisions any time we meet, and any time somebody wants to have a special meeting, but this is essentially an indication, you know, that we want to take a look at replacing the Main Street Viaduct, and again, these are a little bit separate, but no doubt, river rail is somewhat inspiring this, but we want to look at replacing the Main Street Viaduct, we want to look at the alternatives, and that if, if it proves to be a feasible opportunity, then our desire would be to extend river rail in a northern direction. The legislation says that a goal is to ultimately get to Pershing. You know, obviously, to, to many, the goal would be to go wherever the, the opportunities would dictate, but at least down where our hotels, where our senior community is, where, you know, the other activity that goes on at the foot of Park Hill would be an ultimate goal, and, and who knows? goal and who knows? I don't, I don't know that any of us felt we would be this far along this fast when we first started this, but, you know, our community is envied by many and a lot of the development, again, that's occurred has been at least in part inspired by the trolley system. With that, questions?
Will Metro Plan be paying for the feasibility study? Will they be the one doing that?
There's a study that's going on right now and the study is essentially to, you know, Keith Jones and URS is the firm that is handling the study now. And it's, it's very, it really is being, you know, very responsive to what the jurisdictions are interested in doing. And it more confirms, would be more than likely to confirm, you know, kind of our desires. It's not going to come out and say, no, you can't go this direction. And so the study is not as much going to tell us what to do as it's going to tell us, you know, that what we do is something that fits within the federal guidelines.
I guess my question, are they paying for the study? Or is this the city?
Well, the study itself that is going on now, yes, that's being paid for by Metro Plan. Now, to the extent that we look at the engineering alternatives, we're going to probably be paying for that ourselves. And that will be coming back to this council. So, you know, when they give us the different approaches, they're going to be giving us, I mean, they're not going to do the work for free. So, yeah, so, and I don't know if, you know, you can look at a study, but I really, what I think we're going to get from them to take a look at the different alternatives that we have and what a guesstimated cost might be in doing those. So, it's going, it's not going to be the detailed engineering or it's not, I mean, we don't know whether we're going under, over, we don't know where the rails, I mean, the train is going over or under. I mean, and the final choice, which, you know, is one that I don't think anybody would be serious about, but is an at-grade crossing, which, you know, is always an option, but not a realistic option, I don't think, in this instance. So, you know, the cost estimates, the, it's mainly if the council adopts this, then probably the next step, you know, will be to bring back some contract with some engineering firm to give us cost estimates on different kinds of approaches. And it'll be very general in terms of the information that we have. And then, you know, maybe by that time, we'll have an opportunity to know whether the county would be inclined to participate in some of those costs and whether we might want to do something similar to what we did with the roundabout. And that is do something that has that engineering done once we make the choice. And again, you know, I want to underline that this is as much for the future of traffic, in fact, more for the future of traffic than it is, you know, actually for the rail. Now, if it, if we do resolve that traffic issue in replacing the bridge, you know, then certainly the rail would be a part of it. So, I'm not trying to separate them necessarily, but I sure want to underline the fact that, you know, that the replacement of that Viaduct is a critical part of some stage in the future, you know, for vehicular transportation, you know, as those that use that artery sure would understand. Yes, ma'am?
As residents that I've heard from about this have emphasized that the city infrastructure and roads and bridges and such are a real priority. And since this does emphasize this, I see it as a first step to go forward in making some improvements.
Well, I know that any, you know, and one of the things that I can, you know, can sort of paraphrase the engineering meeting that we had and of course Garver and Garver, again, that we had two of their engineers that were present, you know, and we talked about, when I said one of the options too is rehabilitating that bridge, you know, then I got pretty well uniform head shakes and a no. So, that, you know, that while that is an option, I think, you know, and I don't want to, I can't necessarily put them on record, but I do, you know, it sure didn't seem like anybody felt that any money placed into the Main Street Viaduct would be beneficially recoverable, that the replacement and/or a different approach to dealing with the crossing of rail and road traffic would have to be. And when I say rail and road, I do mean, you know, Union Pacific Rail and our road. Alderman, Alderman Baggett and then Alderman Height.
So, you're saying, Mayor, that at this time, there won't be any money spent, but later on, there could be some?
I don't think there's a question. Yeah, I don't think there's a question that I'm going to ask the council to address, you know, and I don't think the first expenditure is going to be more to get some general ideas of what the alternatives are and what people think might be the best alternative. But then if we get into actually deciding to go forward with a design and specifications that someone could go to bid for a federal setting, which is what I would recommend, then you're looking at several hundreds of thousands of dollars for that kind of a, of a contract. But this is no. The answer to that question is this legislation is just saying, you know, that we think this is merit, has merit enough, you know, that we ought to look at what kind of issues we've got to deal with on replacing the Main Street Viaduct and that if we are successful, then we'd like for river rail to go north.
Just a follow-up question. Say we run it up to the high school or the airport or whatever, how much like ballpark money are you talking about maybe bringing into the city because of extending it into these different directions?
Well, you see what's going on downtown in terms of activity and then you add to that the additional real estate that we'll have available for development. You're probably looking, I mean, you know, we were one of the more economical construction of the trolley system that, in the country, and that's why a lot come and look at us. And that was somewhere between seven and eight million dollars a mile, you know, of which a big portion, 80 percent or better, was paid for by the federal government. So, you're probably looking at $10 million a mile and that's not including, you know, whatever we're looking at for the bridge. So, it's not an inexpensive item, but there may be opportunities for a lot of that, in fact, there has to be an opportunities or we wouldn't be going forward that the federal government would participate. But if we're not ready, you know, to make, having made some decisions, then, you know, without a doubt, I think Little Rock is looking very strongly at going down its main street. And if there's an opportunity that comes knocking and they're ready, then we're not, you know, then, you know, we may, you know, we may be left at the, at the station, so to speak.
Are our trolleys paid for or all of our?
No. Well, the capital cost is paid for, but the operational cost is split a third, a third, a third between Little Rock, North Little Rock and the county. And to have the kind of system we do, once, when the county decided to be a player, you know, there are jurisdictions that are, that would, I mean, that come and look at us every day. And to be able to have what we have for roughly 33 and a third percent of a 20 percent match is just a heck of a bargain. Okay, questions? Alderman Height?
I just, Mayor, you and I had a rather lengthy discussion about this this afternoon on telephone and looking at this piece of legislation, I mean, it's, and I think I voiced my comments to you earlier, this, if we pass this legislation tonight, we're committing to a northern extension without considering any other options as far as where the trolley line would go in North Little Rock. And I'm looking at one of the key words here in this, one of these whereas is it says, prior to any financial commitment to a northern extension of the river rail, feasibility analysis should be performed to determine the cost and the benefit. And that's what I'm kind of thinking. I'm thinking that if we do a feasibility study, we're going to look at some of the other options that we, that we're looking at as far as what would be more beneficial in North Little Rock to run that trolley line. In recent years, the discussion that I'm hearing and the planning and has all focused on west, out toward the quarry. In fact, and I told you this afternoon, one of the reasons that I'm riding a bicycle nowadays is because I think my first year sitting on the city council, we were considering allowing construction in the quarry, which we backed away from, but I went out to the quarry to take a look around and realized there was more bicycles out there than there was walkers. But if this feasibility study is targeted toward the northern extension and without considering a possible western extension of the, of the trolley line and even maybe running it up, eventually running it up Pershing Avenue, where, I mean, Pike Avenue, where we've got plenty of right-of-way already that we own up there, it'd be less costly to run it. You'd get to Pershing Avenue, just be a little bit west of, west of Main Street. And then we've also got that spur, that trolley track, or that train track that runs up from 33rd Street up through, I know we've talked about that, putting a bicycle trail on it one of these days, that's all in a vision. But to me, if we're going to run a trolley line as far north as we can, utilizing existing right-of-way and train tracks would certainly help us in the, in the cost of placing that trolley. So, I would think that to include in this feasibility study, an extension out west of the downtown area, close to Dicky Stevens Park and even out River Road that way, with a possible running a northern arm up Pike Avenue would in the long run save us some money if we were to put in a trolley system that way. The other thing too is, and I think you answered my question this afternoon, is putting a trolley track on the Main Street Viaduct is not going to help us pay for that replacement of that Viaduct financially. It's going to cost money to put a, the trolley track on the Viaduct or to modify it, but to replace that Viaduct are either another means of allowing traffic to access the rail yard. Putting the trolley track on it just adds the cost to that Viaduct. So, that we, that's kind of a push, if you know what I'm trying to say. So, I'm just saying that if this feasibility study can consider the north, why can it not consider a western extension also? And I know, and I know that if I was serving as an alderman over in Ward 1, I'd be licking my chops thinking that a trolley's going to run up through, up through the middle of my ward. But I think, I just think that we're missing out if we don't consider some other options of where that trolley should go.
Alderman, you know, feel free, first of all, what you say is incorrect. If we, you know, all we're saying is that we want to look at what it would take, you know, to, and we're going, you know, at some point in time, we're going to have to deal with the Main Street Viaduct anyway. Now, is this pushing that decision a little bit? Obviously, the answer is yes. But if we, as we go look at trying to move this forward, if we can't find a way to deal with the Main Street Viaduct, then we got to look some other direction. So, the Main Street Viaduct, you know, has been a big concern of mine from the very beginning. And that's why I felt going east or west would be likely the way that we had to go. But, you know, to me, the ultimate thought that I came down with is, first of all, I'd like to put a trolley, you know, I'd like to go back, you know, the miles and miles that we had around here, you know, before the last trolley ran in 1947, I think ran, last one ran here in 1936 or '7. So, you know, you got to pick somewhere. And what this council chooses is what we pick. Now, we can study, you know, everything until the cows come home, but, you know, we've got to exercise some judgment and the, the study itself, you know, is not going to know any more than what we know right now. And that is, you know, where we want, where we think it would do this community, just like you and I talked this afternoon, where we think it would do this community the most good. And I know what Little Rock has decided to go, I think they have, I don't know if it's been on a vote or not, but I know there's certainly been discussion going up and down their main street. And while, you know, I'd like to go east and west and north, you know, to me, the most, the biggest opportunities for us, at least in the first stage, and the council certainly has an option going on record, is going north. Now, does that say we're going to do it to the exclusion of every other? You're absolutely incorrect, Alderman. It doesn't say that. It says that if we can, if we can find a way to build a Main Street Viaduct, then that's what we're going to choose. And that, it does say it to that extent, but that is a big hurdle that we're going to have to find a way to overcome. Now, you know, so I'm not really, I mean, you know, this council can, but if we dilly-dally around, you know, then we're going to find ourselves left at the station because I know what Little Rock is interested in doing and I know what they are likely going to try to move forward in accomplishing. So, I disagree with you. I think we need to make a decision and do our best to see if we can implement it. If we can't, then certainly we look back and choose whatever our, what this council feels our second opportunity would be. And who knows? We may have opportunities to do both. I doubt it.
Well, I just, I, basically, I told you this afternoon that approving this legislation means that we're committing to the northern extension, period, and we're not considering the other options that we have as far as where it would benefit the most people in the city in North Little Rock.
Well, I disagree with you, Alderman. So, make your motion to amend if you want to do that.
I can make my motion to amend. I'd amend that we would add a feasibility study for also, also a western extension of the trolley to determine the benefit and the cost and the reasonable length of extension to the western extension in addition to the northern extension.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Carter, do you know exactly how that, might insert that?
I'll put you one together here real quickly. I think.
If I may, while Mr. Carter's working on that, you know, it does seem as though it would be prudent to at least look at the possibilities of going to the west. One of the things that, you know, we have adequate right-of-way down Pike Avenue, which would be available to us, already purchased, sitting there. It would serve the new Bear and Cross area in connection with the development that we hope someday will occur there. I too would like to see it end up at the foot of the hill at some point in time. But, you know, it just seems like it would be prudent to at least look at all our alternatives at this time.
Let's get, I'm sorry, let's get the amendment and then we can talk about it.
Mayor, I'd suggest an amendment to both the title and to section one, that the title would be amended to read, "A resolution requesting feasibility analysis of the northern extension of the river rail line and a western extension of the river rail line and for other purposes." And then section one, after the words, "Explore a northern extension of the river rail line" to insert, "And a western extension of the river rail line."
Okay. And is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second? And that's your second, Alderman Witcher? Is there, all right, discussion on the motion? Alderman Robinson?
Well, I guess I'm a bit confused because, you know, I know for years, we've talked about, you know, that extending that northern, crossed about down Main Street and especially to where the hotels are. And we've talked about that and a lot of the businesses and stuff in that area have been looking forward to that occurring. And I think it'd just be good for business. I don't know about west and I'm not for going west, you know, with this legislation. So, I guess I'm against your amendment.
Alderman Ross?
Well, I just, first I want to say, I don't think Alderman Height and I sit around and lick our chops, but anyway, I just, as far as going north on this, one of the things in the downtown area is, you know, I've heard this, you know, if we have more hotels, more hotels. By taking it north, you have all the hotels there at Pershing. I've always thought that that was what had been discussed when we talked about going north because it is a tourist, it is a tourist thing with the trolleys. And everyone that I have spoke to in Park Hill is opposed, I mean, they were opposed to it going to the airport. They wanted to at least go north. The old trolley tracks are still in Main Street where it went years ago. And that's, that's one thing that, if it's going anywhere, I want to see it go north.
Well, obviously, I oppose Alderman Height and Alderman Height's legislation. I think that we need to, we need to make a decision and we need to try to do all we can to implement that decision. And the longer we wait, the less likelihood we're going to have to go any direction, is my opinion. Any other? All right, on the motion?
Ross?
No. Wait, is this on the amendment or the?
Amendment.
On the amendment, no.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Let him go.
All right, on the motion, is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Well, it wasn't amended.
No, is there a motion? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Somebody?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
R1049, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution repealing resolution number 7335, which declared 906 West 43rd Street in the city of North Little Rock to be a public nuisance and condemned it.
Mr. Wadley, are you here? You want to tell us about this one? Is something we really want to do?
Yes, there's some more pictures behind this. This was back in '07 when the house burned.
Okay.
The council condemned it. New owner came forward, entered into a contract with the city and you'll see what he's done with it. Next picture's coming up. That's what it looks like today.
Okay. Well, it seems like we do want to do it.
It's basically a brand-new house inside. He's done a really good job with it.
We like that and we want to do it. So, let me just ask any, I guess, Ms. Whitby, you've read it and do I have a motion?
Somebody?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to withdraw the condemnation? Ms. Whitby?
Ross? Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
R-1050, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of ARMA designed to participate in the tax-backed program is authorized by Section 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Can I get a motion? Mr. Larson, you want to come to the microphone, just in case anybody wants to ask you who ARMA is, to have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ross?
I know we've had these before. Now, this is just on the construction, correct? The taxes on the construction only?
And equipment.
And equipment.
Which is usually exempt anyhow.
Okay.
And it's only our one cent.
Tell us who ARMA is.
They're a, out of North Shore Business Park. They have a high-tech design company that works with aerospace industry. I really can't tell the product, but the, but the, they do plans and designs.
Do we know how many jobs?
They're, they have about six right now, well, they're adding right now, but, yeah, they're going to grow from six to 50. About a million, two increase in payroll and $300,000 in equipment and $100,000 in addition to the building.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinances, Ordinance 1024, Mayor Hayes.
Let's go, call it.
An ordinance allowing the expansion of a non-conforming use on a certain real property located at the intersection of Riverfront Drive and Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
If we take that to third reading and I'll go ahead and go into any explanation, any answers, any questions? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing the expansion of a non-conforming use on certain real property located at the intersection of Riverfront Drive and Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing the expansion of a non-conforming use on certain real property located at the intersection of Riverfront Drive and Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing the expansion of a non-conforming use on certain real property located at the intersection of Riverfront Drive and Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
We, everybody I think knows, this is the sand blasting operation that's going on right now down at the foot of the, of, somewhat at the foot of the Presidential Library Bridge, just a little upriver from that. R.C. Colburn is the business, the Sand Man, I think is what they go by. And we've been working with them for a number of months to try to mitigate that sand blasting operation. I know that Department of Environmental Quality has been out there and, and, you know, we, we've been trying to do all we could to try to minimize that blasting operation. If the wind's going south, it heads toward Little Rock. If it's going north, then you're pretty well in line of, you know, Friendly Chapel Soup Kitchen. And, and so it's, it's something that, you know, is going to be addressed, but it's, it's been going on and it's really a, a challenge on how to deal with it. Now, they have agreed to put a shed or a, and it's not, you know, ugly as such, but it's a metal building that will help contain that. And while that's not the best answer, you know, the best answer is not to have that activity at all. You know, this is something that even though they feel like this will be a very temporary use, because as we just heard last week, along with potential action of the council tonight, that Presidential Library Bridge will be under construction and the Economic Development Department or Department of Commerce awarded $2 million that is going to go toward really the, I think, the last piece of the puzzle in making that a, a class A-plus structure. And along with what we hopefully will do tonight, you know, we'll have, the north end will be really the only end that will have an opportunity for some significant economic development that will be as a result of the completion of that bridge. The south side, obviously, to the extent that there's economic development, it's already there because the library and its campus is already there. So this is, is, is something that would allow a, somewhat of a containment of that non-conforming use that would help with the neighbors around there, and certainly the RV park is one of those neighbors. So that's essentially an explanation. If any's question, I'll be happy to answer them. Okay, you want to read it one last time, Ms. Whitby, and call it for a vote?
Already did.
All right. Well, let's just read it again, just so everybody knows what we're voting on, because we always like to do it when we stall, not stall, explain things a little bit.
Okay. An ordinance allowing the expansion of a non-conforming use on certain real property located at the intersection of Riverfront Drive and Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading, again.
On the question?
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
O-1025, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the Non-Uniformed Employees Policy and Procedure Manual, first reading.
Move to suspend rules, place it on a second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to provide short-term financing under Amendment Number 78 to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of tangible personal property, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, first reading.
Let's go ahead and take that to third and then I'll answer any questions, if I could. Is there?
Move to suspend the rules, place it on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to provide short-term financing under Amendment Number 78 to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of tangible personal property, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, second reading.
Go ahead and take it. One more?
Move to suspend the rules, place on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitcher?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to provide short-term financing under Amendment Number 78 to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of tangible personal property, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, third and final reading.
Let me go ahead and refer you to Mr. Sisson's Communication Number 7, and it pretty well gives a breakdown. Now, you know, I'm not going to say that, that, that to the penny each of this will be followed, but generally, you know, they will be. If there's any, any material change in any of this as we go through actually acquisition, you know, then we'll certainly report to the council and be happy to report to the council as we go through this. But these are, you know, and the items are indicated as, as reflected in the statement. You know, the street department, we list the, the four big pieces of equipment that we're looking at acquiring, the largest of which, or two largest of which are a link belt excavator and Mr., is Patrick around somewhere?
He's probably in the other room, Mayor, in these.
He can walk on over just in case there are any questions. I know that Captain Davis is in there back. Police cars are fairly self-explanatory. That's, you know, under vehicles, $680,000, roughly $44,000, $45,000 a vehicle. You know, animal shelter code, you know, so, you know, anybody's available to answer any questions. One of the things I want to point out is, is we have 195,000 was, you know, some undesignated. That's in that first column and, you know, we're moving that into Special Projects Fund, again, subject to what this council directs. That'll add somewhere in the neighborhood of, what, about a million?
Yeah, it's about a million five fifty.
Right now, so that adds another couple hundred thousand. Again, that fund is subject to council decision. So if there's any questions on that, we might as well go ahead and, and deal with the second part of it, because the $2 million in terms of parks, Mr. Rhodes, you're around, so why don't we just move on up, just in case we got any questions? You know, Mr. Rhodes, the biggest, the biggest chunk of the $2 million that goes to parks is $1 million to finish out the ballpark. And Mr. Rhodes gave me an update. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to play ball there this year. The grass looks fine, he tells me, but, you know, we got some compaction issues that hopefully our city attorney and, you know, contractor are about to resolve, but that is necessitating a delay until next year before we'll actually be able to play. So floor's open. Alderman Ross?
Well, I just want to say that there's some really great things in here, things that we've needed for a long time. There's a million dollar in here for street and sidewalk, road and sidewalk repair, which is truly needed. I know the vehicles for the street department, those are needed at the police station, but anyway, I'm, I'm thrilled with the breakdown.
Questions, comments? Might as well, like I said, even though the parks part isn't on the, in front of us right now, if you got anything on the parks, it's broken down too. Alderman Whitcher?
Mayor, I do have a question. Since the fire chief isn't standing up, if we can get him, get him up.
Oh, everybody's standing up.
Get everybody, get everybody up. It's Captain Davis.
And we got about 800,000 for each, the police and the fire. We got two fire trucks, I think, and then some improvements to the Park Hill Fire Station.
Chief, like, my question centers on the fact that, you know, a year or so ago, we discussed having a pumper truck out in Rose City at the new fires, not a pumper truck, a ladder truck in Rose City at the new fire station when that occurred. Have we abandoned that idea?
Not yet. We're still waiting on funding for that station. We got a grant in for it. What we've been told, we had a grant in for the quint, is what you're talking about. We've been told that that's going to be very hard for a city our size to get. But we probably won't be able to get a quint. What we might do is when we're officially turned out, is go ahead and, and put in for a pumper out there on one of the grants.
Okay. What, what do we need out there?
Well, I think a pumper would suffice us fine out there. Quint would have been nice, but, you know, you're talking about $700, $800,000 versus about $400,000.
Okay.
And, and like I say, the people that approve those grants, Alderman, are just not going to approve a grant from what we've been told for a quint for a city our size.
Well, and one thing we're hoping, Alderman, is, is again, we have the land, the land, we did some initial, you know, land prep, I guess, if you want to put it that way. We're hoping that we'll be successful in our grant. We got two grants that we're, you know, we're going to keep our fingers crossed in, you know, as candid as I can be, if we don't get the first one, then the second one is going to be a, a challenge. And that is, I mean, you can see how these other things are laid out here.
About a million five fifty in that fund.
Right now, so that adds another couple hundred thousand. Again, that fund is subject to council decision. So, if there's any questions, uh, on that, uh, we, we might as well go ahead and, and deal with the second part of it, because the two million, uh, in terms of parks, Mr. Rhodes, uh, you're around, so why don't we just move on up, just in case we got any questions? Uh, you know, Mr. Rhodes, the biggest, the biggest chunk of, uh, two million that goes to parks is one million to finish out the ballpark, and Mr. Rhodes gave me an update. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to play ball there this year. The grass looks fine, he tells me, but, you know, we got some compaction issues that hopefully our city attorney and, you know, contractor are about to resolve, but that is, uh, necessitating a delay until next year before we'll actually be able to play. Uh, so, floor is open. Alderman Ross?
Well, I just want to say that there's some really great things in here, things that we've needed for a long time. Uh, there's a million dollar in here for street and sidewalk, road and sidewalk repair, which is truly needed. I know the vehicles for the street department, those are needed at the police station, but anyway, I'm, I'm thrilled with the breakdown.
Uh, questions, uh, comments? Uh, might as well, like I said, even though, uh, the parks part isn't on the, you know, in front of us right now, if you got anything on the parks, it's broken down too. Alderman Witcher?
Mayor, I do have a question. Since the fire chief isn't standing up, if we can get him, get him up.
Oh, everybody's standing up by the fire chief.
Get everybody, get everybody up. There's Captain Davis.
And we got about eight hundred thousand for each, the police and the fire. We got two fire trucks, I think, and then some improvements to the Park Hill Fire Station.
Chief, like, uh, my question centers on the fact that, you know, a, a, a year or so ago, we discussed having a pumper truck out in Rose City at the new fire, not a pumper truck, a, a ladder truck in Rose City at the new fire station when that occurred. Uh, have we abandoned that idea?
Uh, not yet. Uh, we're still waiting on funding for that station. We got a grant in for it. Uh, what we've been told, we had a grant in for the quint, is what you're talking about. Uh, we've been told that that's going to be very hard for a city our size to get. But we probably won't be able to get a quint. Uh, what we might do is when we're officially turned down, is go ahead and, and, and put in for a pumper out there on one of the, uh, grants.
Okay. What, what do we need out there?
Well, I think a pumper would, would suffice us fine out there. A quint would have been nice, but, uh, you know, you're talking about seven, eight hundred thousand dollars versus about four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And, and like I say, the people that approve those grants, Alderman, are just not going to approve a grant from what we've been told for a quint for a city our size.
Well, and one thing we're hoping, Alderman, is, uh, is again, we have the land, uh, the land, we did some, uh, initial, uh, you know, uh, land prep, I guess, if you want to put it that way. Uh, we're hoping that we'll be successful in our grant. We got two grants that we're, you know, we're going to keep our fingers crossed, and, you know, as candid as I can be, if we don't get, uh, the first one, then the second one is going to be a, a challenge, and that is, I mean, you can see how these other things are laid out here. Uh, you know, uh, I don't know if you saw the, you know, the Democrat Gazette just recently, but we're, you know, the last report, we're the only city in the county who showed red ink from month to month in comparison, and, and we're working with the state to see if we can get some, you know, further information. I know that I visited with somebody from DFNA, and they're trying to help us, uh, get a little bit better idea, but, uh, at this point, uh, we are suffering more than any other city in the county. Uh, so there's a point where desire and, and dollars don't match, and, uh, and this may be one of them.
Thank, thank you.
I had one, this is for Mr. Sisson.
Okay. Bob?
I know that we've got two bonds that are going to be paid off very shortly, and what, I've had several people ask me, how are we going to pay for this? So that's-
We, I've run a project for the next five years. A big amount of our bonds were paid off this year. We had two million, six hundred thousand dollars worth of bonds had to be paid off. That's why we were so restricted in, in equipment this year. So the, the biggest hunk of our bonds are paid up this year. So we have, we still have a two thousand and seven parks bond issue that has to be paid, but other than that, this will be paid. We have sufficient funds in, in the sales tax quarter to go, to pay for these.
All right. And shop North Little Rock first.
We want people to do that, please.
Mayor, if I could say, we bid this last February, and we got a really good rate, two point four nine percent from Centennial Bank, the, the one, the bank Courtney Menefee is back there. I just want to point out, it was way lower than anyone else.
We appreciate it. Where is Courtney? Uh, stand up and let us thank Centennial. Uh, you know, we appreciate that, and, uh, and, and two point four?
Four nine.
Uh, that, that was, that was, uh, the best by far, and we know that, that, that our somewhat hometown bank, although you're spread all over, you know, now that you've kind of merged, uh, our twin city is, is now broader in terms of its name, but we know your heart, where your heart is, and we appreciate it.
Have one more for Chief.
Sure.
Malden? The eighty thousand for the Park Hill Fire Station, I know the roof needs a lot of work. Is this eighty thousand just for the roof, or is that?
It's for the whole station.
Okay, thank you.
But we've also got a grant in, the historic preservation-
Right.
-that should be something in June. Should know something on it, too.
Great. It needs all the help it can get.
Yeah, we know we need, we think we need more than that, but we're going to do all we can to stretch that eighty as far as it can go, and then we hope to be able to, you know, get a little help from some other sources.
Thank you.
Alderman White?
Um, how, how will we determine the road repairs and sidewalk construction? How's that going to be determined?
Well, we're, we're generally going to look to, just like we have in the past, we're going to look to the, to the wards, and we're going to, you know, make a recommendation. We're going to talk to y'all, and, and, and certainly we're going to try to make some suggestions where wards overlap, but we're going to take a lot of that discretion and try to divide it as, as evenly as we can. Uh, you know, unless there's something that clearly is, is beneficial to the city in terms of sidewalks and roads. So, uh, you know, we're going to do it the same way we've done it in the past. Uh, we're going to try to be as equitable among the wards, but if there's something that has an overriding community interest, then we may, you know, make our thoughts known. But other than that, it's the same way that we have in the past. Any other, Alderman Height?
I just, uh, we, it's not very often that we have Mr. Lane, uh, close to the microphone, and while he's there, I just want to say thank you for the response time that, uh, this gentleman, when you call him, he's on his way to, uh, to fix whatever you call him, and your, and your street department is doing a bang-up job out there. At least, they are in Ward Four. I'm not sure of the other wards, but I know y'all, I just want to say thank you that out loud while you're up close to the microphone.
Well, Patrick, Patrick, you know, is, is a terrific, uh, leader of those folks down there, but he's got a great crew. So, I mean, it takes, uh, it takes teamwork, and we, we certainly acknowledge your leadership and, uh, and, and underline our appreciation to your entire department. Alderman White?
Can the answers emails really fast?
We, we like answers, and we appreciate Patrick. Uh, anything else? Ms. Whitby, you want to, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Baggett?
We have a lot of, uh, roadwork down in our, in our ward, in Ward Three, a lot of potholes and damage, so I hope that when the money's distributed, we'll, we'll get some, uh-
Potholes are a top priority. Uh, you know, we hope to spend this money on some projects. Uh, so, uh, you know, we'll, uh, we'll be sending out, uh, information and input, uh, and, uh, and we're asking y'all to sort of help us, help, uh, the folks the best we can. It's not enough, but it's more than, it, we'll make it then. We'll make it then.
Mayor, as Mr. Height and I were sitting here, and he made that comment, you know, that there are potholes all over this city, and it, it knows no income level or street level. We've all got them, so.
Yeah, they, this, last year, I mean, so far this year, it's at least been a little bit kinder from a pothole standpoint, because the weather is, is, we're a little bit under the average in terms of our rain, so, you know, you can't have everything, but at least from a pothole standpoint, the weather's better.
I, I guess I'm just saying we have a lot of overlay work that needs to be done in there.
Absolutely.
So I hope when you get ready to divide the money, we'll get, we'll get some money to-
Our, our efforts are going to be to spread it as equal as we can, uh, in terms of, of the importance of projects, and that's why we're going to be asking everybody for their input. Uh, Ms. Whitby?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to provide short-term financing under amendment number seventy-eight to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of tangible personal property, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Third and final reading, again.
Move to adoption.
Second. On the question?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In whicher?
Yes.
O-ten twenty-seven, Mayor Hayes.
Please call him, Ms. Whitby.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a promissory note to provide short-term financing under amendment number seventy-eight to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of tangible personal property, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Second reading.
Move to suspend the rules placed on the third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In whicher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Any council member? Uh, none appearing. Uh, microphones open for, we have five folks who signed up for public comment, uh, so-
Mayor, but before they come up, um, the animal shelter open house mentioned earlier is April the twenty-fourth from two until four P.M.
Okay. Uh, over there. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. I wondered what you were coming in this direction for. Thanks. All right, uh, Mr. Ard.
Any council members? I hope I pronounced his name right, and I'm looking back at the North Little Rock Character Department. Jim Qualley? Is that close enough? He's over the streetlights. He was given one, and he made an extra effort to call and explain why the lights was out down on the skateboard park. That's good when an employee takes time to call back when he turns something in, and he also explained what was being done about it. So, want to say thank him for that. On behalf of Margaret Powell, I want to remind everyone, so I can quit wearing this shirt, that they need to get their censies turned back in. Everyone counts in North Little Rock, and it gets us more votes, more money, and Mayor, we need money in our city. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ard, and, uh, underlining that, uh, census forms are still out, still going out, and if you don't want somebody knocking on your door, send your census form back in, because they're going to be coming out and trying to add to the numbers, so we appreciate that. Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I just want to bring something to y'all, ahead of y'all tonight. These ordinances that's being passed and passed and passed, and this is just my opinion, but when they're passed, all y'all has had opportunity to be involved in some of them, some of you hadn't that long, but whether you've been in there one hour or you've been in there thirty years, it don't make no difference. You take that responsibility to use and enforce them ordinances in your ward. They're not being enforced. And Mayor, I told you here a while back that I was going to do a little bit of digging, and I was going to find out who's responsible for these, and I was going to address them. Some of it is yours, and some of it is Maurice Taylor's. I've talked to him ever since he's been in there, and he's told me what he was going to do. It has not been done, and if he hadn't have wanted the job, I don't know why he took it. But I'd either like to get on the same page that he's on and address some of these things, or give me the opportunity to come here and apologize to the people that I had influence on at the polls, voting for him, because my heart was in it and it's still in it. And Mayor, you know yourself, you know a little bit about me, you know, I've worked awful hard for things done in Rose City, and I've made some people upset, but you know, when you get on the wrong side of the fence and you're not doing like you're supposed to, and you, uh, start doing things that shouldn't be done, I'm going to address you. It don't make no difference. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is. And you made a statement here a while back about you hoped what happened in Ward Three didn't affect the people's confidence in, uh, North Little Rock city government. These ordinances, things, the people that I've been talking to, this started a long time ago, and it's just gradually, gradually faded down. And, uh, they know y'all can do better, but it's about all downtown. If, uh, code enforcement, and I've talked to you about that before, if a code enforcement done half the job that the police department done out there, we wouldn't have near the problems that we have. And I will be back and address this unless there's a banner put up on the front of this building out here that has my name on it, said, Bobby Taylor, you're welcome to come in here and clean the dust out of one of these chairs, but we've done, made our nest, and we don't want you in here rearranging any of the straw. Until that happens, I will continue to speak to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mayor, council members, I've been in here before. My name is Jim Tolliver, Tolliver Body Shop. I want to thank Brother Sam Baggett for the prayer this morning, or this evening, and I hope all the council members will take it to heart. I've heard the rideaway on Pike Avenue mentioned several times tonight. My body shop was on Pike Avenue when Urban Renewal bought us out, and they told us that they had a place for us to move to. And I'd like to throw a hypothetical in here, Ms. Robinson. If these council members passed a resolution, said that you have used the doors on your house, all that you can use them, you're going to have to enter your house through the windows, that would be an inconvenience, wouldn't it? Well, that's what you've done to the body shops, and I'd like to ask tonight that you take into consideration, any body shop that has been in business for at least sixty years be granted a grandfather clause to your resolution that you passed, the nuisance resolution. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, sir. We've got several others that have indicated they want to speak, uh, going once, going twice. Uh, Mr. Carter?
I would just like to make one, uh, one comment if, uh, did, I, I know I made a recommendation in my communication that certain language would be included on the agenda, uh, and, uh, I'd, I'd like a head nod or something that we would be able to do that.
Well, let me, let me just say that, that, you know, that it's my intent to have that, uh, I'd certainly follow your advice, and-
Thank you.
-when you, when you give us some direction, that's your direction, and, you know, unless any council says otherwise, we'll, uh, you know, work with Ms. Whitby and put it where you ever think it's appropriate, so.
I appreciate that, and I also appreciate, uh, resolution, uh, R-ten forty-nine tonight. I think that proves our process works, that we can, uh, uh, we can engage homeowners with a, with a responsible process that requires them to comply with a given timetable to remediate a condemned structure, and they can do it. And, and I think that's a great success story tonight.
Let me point one other thing out. Uh, you know, leading by example, and we really didn't set the best example for a long time, but we want to point out to those at home that we, uh, are not, uh, adverse to central Arkansas water. That's what we use, but they were in bottles before. Now they're in a jug and glasses, and, uh, you know, we, uh, are, are working through recycling. We certainly support that, but when you don't have to recycle and you can wash, you know, then, uh, you know, we'll assure you'll have clean glasses at every council, uh, meeting. So, you know, we, we wanted to point that out.